Yeah, I'm in my, I asked, I last thing I mentioned to Star is there was like a work session. But we already had some plans, I was gonna bring it up.
Wow.
For instruction coaches.
Sure.
Wow.
Where you can also do a little bit of my life or something there.
Sure.
Our work is after four thirty, that's where you have you.
We go this way.
So we're gonna do.
I didn't even take the reference.
But you see, I think if I'm just gonna see that paper, if you are. I don't want you to be taking it.
Position four, and it's got the board memo that went along with it and all these other attachments. A couple hundred pages. I'll help you.
Oh yeah, I'm not like this.
So, Star, I mean, we're into the. Yeah, Alicia, I mean, these are out, Mark is out, so Dana Mitchell is on her way.
What are you talking about?
Mark, did you know? Lisa and Alicia are out too. Star is, I don't know, it's gonna be pretty good work session. Lisa and Alicia are calling in.
You're remembering, you're all trying to, long term and short term. Well, well, I'm glad you guys saw me. We have to sit through this stuff.
Oh, that's mine, yeah. I'm June. And that's in June.
Yeah, babe. Okay. You know, I didn't realize when I was in the mother's period, I was just not stretching at all. I was, I was a placeholder. I was reacting to the freaking copy. And like, you're.
I feel like we're doing that. That we want to. We're getting out of here.
Yes, I gave my part in my buffer, man. I didn't this time, so maybe I could tell me actually, you know what I mean?
They're dangerous.
Oh, and we are gonna have, um, come back here in two weeks. There are twenty four members that, but he doesn't want to get up. I think later, we'll, you know, off my name.
So it's just Dave and Andrew. So I brought my phone to you and I can tell.
They think those books got fairly well.
How much do you want?
I'm making a check. It's one of your birthday.
They would be Jerry Anderson and Andy. James, they count. He can ask a question.
Are you?
Oh man, because here I was thinking I thought it was some trip. Oh, I can't, tell me what place. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I ate my chicken. Start, I'm gonna watch my cows. I'm too. Anybody want? I stopped eating with them.
Did they make, did they make?
I heard that. And that's what. I just like, first you have to give us a second there and.
What's that?
Yeah. No one.
Did you send it forward?
Yeah. Do yours.
Yeah, sure. Thursday Friday. Do my, uh, my writing, so I need someone to gather. You know, you're twenty two and twenty now, so.
Does it kinda like, well, how do you talk? Are you sure?
You got a big crowd.
When you see.
See how many.
I'm really willing to admit that for a long time, but I think that for a while, I get. Own it. Yeah, I own it. We can just wait until. Ask her how far else she can. I mean, we don't have a lot of time. Good question, I'll go next.
Awesome, thanks.
I'll check. Why don't we just do that? The notes you mentioned. The notes you mentioned. I read it. I just like reading.
Read. I mean, we've got. More and more things are being used to. Your efforts are small.
Well, what we did.
When I'm reading.
So the thing was, because I'm familiar with the training. Oh yeah. The art, the difference is the art. That's the part that tells us that we have to do. That's a kickback. So we are.
In our news, our pressing.
Yeah, so what we did is very important. The party plan says that you have to do this. Second, you have to do the blending and the products and all that. So it is essential. That's where.
It's hard to teach, it's hard to drive. You know, I know, we both done the period, I'm sat there hours and hours and learned.
Yeah. All the sounds of they, the sounds of O U G A are killing them. There's eight sounds of O U G.
Mrs. Fisher, who used to say it's like falling down the steps, like.
Good pod.
Yeah, so, um, that is why the.
Phil Freeske, too. Well. It's here. Well, if we're gonna be successful, it's difficult. Change, change.
Like I said, you're.
Change how life is.
You're right. I'm today, she was learning why. The structural course is just on the whole product, like going through, going through. Once you get the pieces of that product, the kids, they go far beyond and everybody will text. To find each other, we're about to walk around and go to their. Out reading that decoder text, the principal stood right under her weapon. Oh no. She didn't finish that product lesson and she made him go back and sit down. That's a huge win. The principals are starting to understand that it's essential to make sure that you're kicking that. Lesson and keep our in that completely part. So we're getting it. I mean, yes, and that's.
How's it going? Good area? Good. I think we wanted to set that phone up here tonight again, um, a few folks that.
That's why. We don't.
Yeah, we just set it up right here like we did last time.
It spells that out.
Yep, awesome, thank you.
Isn't it really long? So.
Really.
That's like Congress.
Really from the New Year's.
Are you gonna run the bill, but Mark got it.
I mean, it's just. 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 It spells that out.
Isn't it really long? So. I mean, yes, and that's.
How's it going? Good area? Good. I think we wanted to set that phone up here tonight again, um, a few folks that.
That's why. We don't.
Yeah, we just set it up right here like we did last time.
It spells that out.
Yep, awesome, thank you.
Isn't it really long? So. That's like Congress.
Really from the New Year's.
Are you gonna run the bill, but Mark got it.
I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just. I mean, what I said to them, I said, they called me, and I said, you need much? You need, you can't just pass a decision without funding. It's not a gift where you want to be. And I guess, I really wanna, I wanted, and then they asked me to, you know.
Yeah, well, we have, um, the different pieces of a plan like other states at college. You take the general thing of reading some goal, but then how to drill it down above it. And Martin has a reason. He's, he's, he did all the research over the weekend on that.
All right. Because they were pushing me really hard. Yeah, to miss some time. I think there's some things that you can do, and, um, I mean, I was looking at the pistol load on the one that's loaded through the legislature. It basically is requiring, take the, you know, the basic curriculum. That you base on. For a lot of areas, the county leaders are influencing.
And you know, we don't, he shows that he does that too.
We do that. Requires that, or you're a screener, and then, then.
Which we have the screener.
And I think where the one we could come in is providing some sort of non-competitive option. Block for, uh, structure with the literacy. I didn't just say my dream, I'm trying to.
That's right, you too.
But she'd have me here right on the.
Yes.
I have no honor, so, yeah, I don't have any guilt for it.
I'll have to look at that. What we did was just go, uh, evidence-based, um, way up the audition, just put on reading and then have it on that. And it wasn't.
This is, so, back to wires, this is the, that is basically the mention.
I guess if having more viewers than, you know, like, like, I just said, he said, just kind of, you know. They were in jeans, new states itself, just, just did, they hate that, they didn't. You know, and I know, and I know, we thought somebody was. But, um, he said, they're.
Right, because. We're getting ready for the.
They can't, they can't. It's not actually.
He said, she barely had.
Right, she wants to solve.
And they.
That's my.
I gave you a little bit. They have obviously.
I'm a driver. That's why I respect that.
He said it was just a regular. It's long, and it was a car, and then.
Yeah.
They said.
What if we go and just.
Netflix cover. Mm-hmm. CSI. Seventy six.
That's what I'm really saying.
It makes that to, uh, in the role, it's eighty five percent. Even though we have. At least.
They were halfway.
You're required to have a small group.
What plan?
It's like.
It's like. Yeah, oh, sorry. I just, I just. I'm sorry, so they have the reading passage that's. They're very high, they're, they should use their home data that they have for last year. They're all supposed to incorporate that shit all the time. Here's it, because it was legislation.
It's, um, it's somebody that.
And you have to follow the thing, right? Because it's not a station. And she has to.
It looks like.
She used evidence-based reading instruction, early screening intervention.
Yeah, right here.
Um, you know, Dana, the state insurance. Um, we're really seeing the elements. So last year, um, served as a long. During. Yeah. But, yeah, I can. But, yeah, I can. Yeah. Yeah. It's just like. Yeah, okay. But, yeah, I can. But, yeah, I can. Yeah. Yeah, I think mine's. Yeah. Looks like that, yeah. We did, we, I suppose, we have like, we, the station. She was. Well, like, she was. Yes, because they're beautiful, and I just like to see these represent the. But here's the thing, there's. I heard. Yeah. Um, two of them, uh, the Tommy, um, they did, she's always, you know, asking me, um, they were. Yeah, um, Shelley, yeah. Yes, everybody, I can see the faces. Sure, those are my cards, and they came out, um, like. Yeah, so, you said, you said, like, especially, especially, and then it all looked like your life. Right, and it's only. So I'll make that sound. They're gonna hear it right now. Here when the road. Although it's. Yeah. Some geese.
Oh, Mr. Josh, I could tell him that.
So they all been doing it. So they're all.
Kathy doesn't have nothing to talk about how old I am.
I am five. Yeah. He's working a long.
Said Josh, he said, what's Josh?
No, both parties stand tall, both. And it's both houses that go. People really. Yeah.
Well, like, you know, it's maybe that's very.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Well, like, you know, it's maybe that's very.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Uh, good afternoon, I'm, um, going to go ahead and call our work session, is this on?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call our.
These are closer.
They are closer, okay.
Is this on, Mike, is this on?
Um, it is, you just have to press the button.
It, it's green, okay.
It just.
Okay, well, I'm, um, calling the work session to order, and, um, present this evening are Dave Donley, um, myself, Dana Mitchell, and, and Andy Holloman is walking in. Um, member, uh, board president Star Marseth, and members Elisa Snelling, Alicia Hildy, and Mark Foster are all, um, absent unexcused this evening's, or this afternoon, um, so we'll go ahead and start.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. The one thing I did want to mention is that we are going to add an item to the executive session, we're going to be discussing negotiations. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for remembering that. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, and this afternoon, uh, there are two requested items from work session. Uh, one is timely in that, uh, there'll be a request for a vote later today in regard to curriculum, and the prior one we're gonna start with is staff evaluation. And, uh, earlier, some information was provided, uh, to the board during the work session, and it was requested, uh, if more information could be gathered and, and additional questions. So, uh, we have, um, I believe Dr. Knutson presenting, as well as, um, Mike Graham, our chief academic officer, are gonna present some information, uh, give a background of that, and, uh, certainly from there, we can drive down into further questions or data for which the board would like. So this had been on the schedule and just kept getting put off with more timely items during the budget time. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to them. They will finish, so that we can have a half an hour, uh, they'll finish within fifteen minutes, so that we can have a full half an hour for the next one, because that one, again, is the, the most timely. You might have questions in regard to voting later. So thank you, and I'll turn over to you guys.
Okay.
Just one mic at a time? Uh, you could.
Gotcha. All right. So we did, um, there was a request to talk a little bit, the, uh, staff evaluation, specifically AEA, or teacher evaluation, and, uh, we realized it's been a while since we have gone through this, and we've been using a new system here, I think the last five years? Five years now, and so, wanted to go through a little bit and just explain kinda how it works, uh, how, what it's built upon, and then give a, a little bit of data as to, as to what we're seeing.
Okay, can turn the slide. Um, I'm Jenny Knutson, the Senior Director of Teaching and Learning, and we wanna start by talking and anchoring you guys in, um, the Danielson framework. D requires that the teacher evaluation process is built on a national framework for teaching, and this framework, you know, is specific to education, but having a framework isn't unique to education. Other professions, medicine, accounting, architecture, all have frameworks that really define what the expertise and procedure should look like, um, for that profession, and this is an example of, of one in the field of education. Um, ASD uses the Danielson framework for teaching, and this has been aligned with Alaska State, um, teaching standards and the cultural standards. So if you look up at your screen, you'll see that it has four domains, four quadrants, and within each of those quadrants, there are components, so we have twenty-two total components in there. And as you're looking at it, if you just focus on the right hands, or the left-hand side, domains one and four, and that is planning and preparation and professional responsibilities. And we like to refer to those as the off-stage domains. Really, those are things that happen before teaching and after teaching, and that inform instructions, such as lesson planning, understanding where students are, their data, um, and then also the professional learning and talking with colleagues around instruction and how kids are progressing. So those are the off-stage domains. If you look at the right-hand column, domains two and three, domain two is the classroom environment, and domain three is instruction, and those are the onstage domains. Basically, those are what you see when you go into a classroom, the classroom environment and what instruction looks like. So that's the framework that we use to, um, observe teachers and have a conversation around what instruction is and the complexity of teaching.
Okay, so, with that, there are four categories of evaluation that, that, uh, that, uh, AEA members and educators fall into. One is the, what is called initial evaluation, this is for our non-tenured folks, um, keeping in mind that, uh, people reach tenure on the first day of their fourth consecutive year, so it's our newer teachers. Um, the proficiency evaluation, and that is, again, uh, that's our tenured, our tenured people, um, that, both of those, when they, whether it's the initial eval or the proficiency evaluation, both of them, um, the administrator would go in, the evaluator would go in, and they will evaluate them on all twenty-two, those components that Jenny was just talking about. Um, our, in the initial evaluation or non-tenure, those were due February fifteenth, so those are already completed for this year, and the others would be due May fifth. We, last year, we began a non-evaluation year for our tenured folks, um, that is, people who had had at least two years in a row, their tenure, they had at least two years in a row of, uh, being found to be proficient in all twenty-two, uh, the components, they can then take an alternating year where they're really not evaluated by the administrator coming in and, and taking a look. Um, and we can get, we'll get that, I think, a little bit more later, but really, it's given some, some time then for the administrators to really focus on those that they're focused on within that year, um, spend some time looking at what's going on in those classes, doing more of the observations with them, um, trying to raise the quality rather than just trying to get the quantity of everybody, so.
So I just wanna understand that, so there's years, we were, so now we're going two years in between evaluations?
Um, one year between, so, and every other year, yes.
So it's two years between evaluations?
Well, no, from, well, your evaluation would come on May fifth of the one year. Um, the next year, you would not be on a formal evaluation, uh, unless there's a reason to. Administrator can pull somebody on to one at any time, if they thought there was a reason to, or if, you know, if they'd gone in and just, uh, go, doing a walkthrough or something else, had seen something, but, mm, I wanna get and take another look at that. They can pull them back on.
Do we have any metrics on that? How, how frequently that's happening?
That people have been pulled back?
Yeah.
Um, I do not, I would have to look into that, but this is only, today, this year is the second year. So half of our tenured teachers who had met all the, that criteria, had, their first year was last year. We kinda took everybody, we divided them into half, basically by alpha.
So if we're gonna go to a two-year system, I think it's really important to collect data metrics on, on how much that is occurring in the off-years.
That the people are being pulled back on.
Yeah, because if it's non-existent, that raises a red flag.
Right, well, we, we can certainly take a look at that and get back to you.
Yeah.
Might I add that one of the goals for that, um, because of the, if you take a look at business and the number of direct reports to an individual is about five or seven, to a direct report in a company, for someone to fully supervise and evaluate, uh, many of our supervisors have twenty-five, twenty-six. So this allows that our educators in good standing, who are moving forward and receive, um, positive evaluations, are, uh, allowed with mutual consent by their supervisor to take a year off, and then the focus is on the others. So it's really directing efforts and focus on building capacity in, in people to alternate, uh, those. So the, the reasoning behind it isn't just that it's less work, it's actually to build a focus around evaluation, so that it's more meaningful, you spend more time. And so, uh, we can take a look and see where we are, we certainly have data that demonstrate a change in outcomes for evaluation, demonstrating that, uh, there's a difference in what we do now than what we used to do. We actually have more data demonstrating, uh, more proficiency rather than.
Exemplary.
Exemplary.
Correct, and when we came to, we started this looking at the twenty-two components, the amount of time it was taking administrators to really take it, take evidence on all of them, um, we kinda heard from them that they were just kinda drowning, they were spending all their time in this, and they really wanted to do a quality job rather than just trying to hit everybody going quick, so that was part of the reason for trying to do this.
Thank you. I just wanna better understand that. Um, Dr. Bishop, what you said kinda confused me. I thought that we were gonna go on an every other year cycle, but then you were saying that there was an agreement not to do it in certain years, to focus on those individual employees that might need it more than others, so is it, is it a flexible two years?
If, if you're tenured, that's a great question. If you're tenured with, uh, a positive valuation.
For at least two years.
For at least two years, you are eligible to have a skip year. If you are not in good standing, you are not eligible, or, sometimes, if you, what happens is sometimes administrators move schools or teachers move schools, and they might have been, um, selected for a skip year in one school, but they're new to that administrator, so then they would probably get that as their year and a skip year another time. So it's really depend, it's a flexible system, um, but, that you use the information in front of you to make those decisions. It's about, um, earning eligibility and then using that process to, uh, then refocus when you need to or not.
So for example, a brand-new teacher, we're gonna want to have those conversations every year, and that's why it takes a couple years of showing proficiency before you're eligible for that skip year.
Okay, um, I'm just gonna say, for anyone in the private sector or any other government sector I've ever worked on, the amount of time ASD spends in the evaluation process is incomprehensible. I mean, it, it is, it just consumes an incredible amount of time out of every year. Um, as someone who went through it a lot and watched other people go through it a lot, um, you know, the little bit of confusion. It, it starts in late September, early October, it continues through May, so the skip year makes it sound to you like it's every other year, and there's this long gap in between, but it's a year, really.
Correct.
Because it, it takes the entire year to get through it. Um, my understanding of Danielson originally really was about professional development, it, it's very deep, it's complex, and, and it's a great exercise, but as someone who's been evaluated in lots of other job settings and lots of other companies, I've never experienced anything like it, in terms of the time consumption, the effort that goes into it, and, and I, the other point that you made, at any point, a, uh, administrator is uncomfortable, they can initiate the process right then, and start formal observations and begin the process of making sure someone's really doing their job. So it, uh, I just think it's important for people to understand that. It, people are not getting these long gaps where they can coast out of it.
Do you have another question?
Yeah. Thank you for that explanation, I really appreciate it. So what I would appreciate as a policymaker is a better understanding of what the data metrics are on this evaluation process. As Mr. Holloman has pointed out, if it's going, if it can be initiated at a non-scheduled time, how frequently is that happening? How frequently are our supervisors, our, our principals putting letters of instruction into, bringing those forward when they're identifying something that's going on that they think needs to be corrected?
We've got some of that data to show you here in a little bit, as far as where we are.
Okay, good.
Um, the, the fourth one, uh, beyond the non-evaluation year, is just an improvement evaluation, and this is our plan of growth or plan of improvement, um, we'll go through that in just a minute, um, but those are for, if they're found to be, basically, a teacher's found to be basic or, or found to be unsatisfactory, um, those fall into sort of that category. So I just kinda wanna hit those four categories that people might be in on any, on any given year, um, for evaluation. Um, so the evaluation process itself, um, for all folks, including those who are on the non-eval year, there's a beginning of the year conference, um, we wanted to make sure that everybody knows. We want to make sure that everybody knows exactly where they are, what their standing is. So the, the purpose is to really reflect on the Danielson framework, review the most recent evaluation, assuming there was one, unless they're a brand-new teacher or new to us. Kind of go through that, make sure they understand the process, how things are going to work. Then, of course, we have observations. They're both formal and informal. A formal observation requires a pre-conference, make schedule, you sit down with the teacher, talk about what's going to happen, what you're going to be looking at. Of course, there's the observation and the follow-up post-observation with those three things taking place. We also have informal observations, part of the process, which are, they are not, they are scheduled more when the evaluator sort of has time. Those could be 15, up to 15 minutes or so, as opposed to the 20 to 60 minutes a formal observation would be. So there are informal. All of those require documentation of as far as what's been observed, what's seen, scoring with those. We use the Danielson Evaluation Rubric. There is, I mean, you saw the 22 components. For each of those components, there are elements under them, there are, we have a whole rubric that shows the kinds of things you'd observe. So what the, what the principal or what the evaluator would do is go in, take evidence. It's no longer just sitting there and kind of looking what's going on. They're actually charting evidence of what kids are saying, what's going on. They go through, they link those to the various components, and then rate them according to the rubric. So when they sit down then and talk with the, with the teacher about what they've seen, they can kind of go through that. Again, then it falls in, within, within that rubric, there are four, four categories. There is unsatisfactory, in which case, you know, you don't understand the underlying concepts. And unsatisfactory, really, by the time we get to the end, is, is job jeopardy. That is the plan of improvement. Things have to straighten up. Basic means they kind of understand the concepts, but they aren't implementing it well or regularly. They're attempting, but not entirely successful. If a teacher has two or more components, they're marked basic by the end of the year on the evaluation, they would then be on a plan of growth. It is not necessarily a, it's not necessarily a job jeopardy, but they've got to, they've got to really focus in on that. And then proficient, which is where they understand it, and they understand what should be happening, they understand those components, and they're implementing them well. We also have exemplary. Things can be marked exemplary, and that's when it's just really above and beyond. It's mastered, and again, there's a rubric that would show, very often, the kids really, they understand what's supposed to be happening, they're taking the initiative, it's a class or that, at least on those components, is running well. We don't have an overall exemplary rating for a teacher, but we do have, within the proficiency evaluation, they, various components can be marked as exemplary. And then there's an end-of-year conference to go through and, and see how folks are doing. Take a look at that again, February 15th for the non-tenured's and May 5th for those who are tenured. So the two that, you know, oh, yes.
If we don't have an exemplary category for overall rating, what, what do we have?
We have, we have, a teacher would follow either being unsatisfactory, basic, or proficient.
Proficient.
Yes. Thank you, I'm sorry. Then, so the instructional improvement evaluations, again, mentioned this, there are two of them. Both the basic, or you'll often hear that referred to as a Plan of Growth. It, you know, if your teacher is on that, they've had a couple, they've had at least two formal observations. It will be 45 to 90 days in length. It's really specific to those components that they're really working on. That educator can also request an evaluation support coach through AEA. AEA provides that, where they'll come in, they will help the, they will help the teacher trying to meet, as that goes. Again, that, those AEA folks are not in any way evaluative. They don't report to us. They're specifically a coach to try and help them. The other one is the unsatisfactory evaluation, and that's a Plan for Improvement. It is 90 to 180 days, and that is job jeopardy. They've got to get that going on. Any one component marked unsatisfactory, you put that in place.
Okay, so here we come to the data.
Yep.
The slide that you see right now, this is linked back to that Danielson framework that you saw at the very beginning, that color-coded quadrant one. And what we're showing you here is from 2018 data, and they're the top three components of those 22 components that were rated exemplary and basic. So we're kind of looking at both ends of the spectrum. So when we look at our data from last year, we see that the top three components that were rated as exemplary fall around these, part of it's creating environment and then also instruction. So 2A is creating the environment of respect and rapport. That's really teachers' interactions with students as well as students' interactions with each other. 3C is engaging students in learning, and this is really the heart of instruction that we're looking for. These are activities, assignments, groupings that we do, instructional materials, pacing of instruction, how we get kids engaged, not just on tasks, but really cognitively engaged in their learning and successful. And then the, the third area is 2D, which is managing student behavior, so such as setting expectations, monitoring student behavior, and then how are teachers responding to misbehavior if that happens in the classroom. And what was interesting when we looked at our data from last year is that two of these three components are also rated as the top basic components as well, 2D and 3C that you'll see. So we're seeing it as the top on both ends of the spectrum. The third one was 2C, which is managing classroom procedures. That's kind of like your transitions, your routines, the overall classroom management. That was rated third under basic, but it was also the fourth top highest in exemplary too. So they're very close to each other. And as we've kind of been talking about this in, in problem solving and hypothesizing as to why is this, we can reflect on, really, in the ASD, we've been working on these areas. So when you think about many of the classroom environment, the classroom management stuff, we've been implementing Capturing Kids' Hearts to work on those relationships with kids and between kids. We have been working on classroom management. CHAMPs is an example of a framework we use in elementary school for behavior management. We have foundations teams that are in all of our schools that are looking at schoolwide behavior management processes and what do we have in place. So those are the types of things that we've been focusing on, and this shows that, I mean, our hypothesis is, is that, you know, people are paying more attention to them. So teachers are mastering that, and they're starting to demonstrate that more in class. But then also, we're seeing our principals are having more conversations about these issues with teachers that we may not have had before when you didn't have a framework that gave that language and really explicitly laid out, these are components of, of teaching. So that's one piece of information.
Yes.
It seems to me like managing student behaviors is going to be super environmental. I mean, you're going to have some schools where that's, you know, the kids are not going to behave like kids at other schools and be entirely different problem set for those teachers. How do you balance that out from school to school in evaluating how a teacher manages student behaviors?
Well, our schools, I would say, they are working that, not just every teacher go figures out, they have foundations teams, they're, they are taking this on as a school, looking at what their needs are, what their processes are. So they are, they are implementing this schoolwide, depending on what the, what the concerns, what the needs are. Every school is a little bit different, you're right. But as they put their plans into place, the teachers should be following those, should be expected. If they need some additional assistance, just because the individual kids they have, they get them. But they're still, when you look at the rubric, and we can, we could show you the rubric if you'd like later, what, what should happen there, no matter what school you go to or who your clientele, there's some expectations for, for, for classroom management.
And it's going to look slightly different in different schools, to your point of, there are different challenging behaviors in different settings. The practices that they're going to put in place might look a little different from school to school. Some might be more intensive in how they're working with kids. Others, you might not need that level of intensity because there may not be as many behavioral issues.
I'm just concerned that as an overall policymaker, it'd be so hard to deal with that, that particular evaluation factor because of the difference from school to school. I, I think, I understand your response, is it's going to be adjusted based on the goals of that particular school. At the same time, I just wonder about the fairness of it. I think it's a valid, you know, evaluation factor, but, but I don't know about the fairness of it as you go from classroom to classroom, or mostly from school to school.
And we could, you could actually make that argument probably for lots of these components, because they, they're different, different clientele, different, different looks at what that is and the challenges those teachers are facing academically, behaviorally, kids with social-emotional needs, I mean, they're with all of that, which is part of our whole MTSS and really helping look at what individual kids need and teachers working those things through.
You know, I was going to say that for new teachers that might be struggling, they always wanted to be observed after someone had observed me, so that they would look really good and organized and at the top of their game. It actually gets discussed. But most of the evaluators are staying within a school, and so they often are looking at a teacher in front of students they've seen before, or they're looking at students who are similar to the other classrooms up and down. And I think that kind of spoke to the idea that, that crashed and died really quickly when teachers were asked to send a video to the state, and impartial people in another place are watching videos. And so you might be watching a video, as happened, full of kids that were the sons and daughters of university professors in Fairbanks, and then you might be looking at a Title I school next where kids are coming out of families that aren't so ingrained in education and whatnot. And in those cases, the contrast is really difficult. But, but I do think you have evaluators from the school that, that know a lot about the general atmosphere and everything. That's, that's not a concern that I've ever really had teachers talk about so much, that they would be judged against performance by teachers at another school. There are norming videos that show how it's supposed to go, and, and those are beautiful.
Yeah, and those, and principals go through about 30 hours of professional development on how you observe for this and calibrating and those types of things, so that, that combined with knowing their building and the needs at their school, I think addresses that.
Well, and we could also look at the data, right? I mean, ours, our, first of all, is that statement true, that there are huge differences across schools, that kids are harder to manage in one school than another? And are the teachers in, if that is in fact true, are the teachers, are there a higher percentage of them in that basic area? So we could, we could take a look at that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to go on to another data slide.
Before, I'm sorry, before we move off of that chart, what, do you know what the percentages are in, for, for the?
Yes, actually, that, so, and looking at the components, you know, the whole premise that we've taken on this is that you live in proficiency, visit exemplary. So we would, we would assume that most things were, hopefully would be marked proficient. If we looked at all the components last year, 82.6% of them, over almost 35,000 components were marked proficient. About 16, a little over 16, well, 16.8 were marked exemplary of the components for teachers' evaluations. So you, you've, the most proficient, though, we have, we have some that are certainly marked exemplary, but we don't have, we have very few teachers that are marked exemplary in all their things. That would be an almost impossibility.
And what about the basic, what percentage?
The basic, we had, it's about half a percent, 0.49% were marked, of the components were marked basic. And a little, a 0.06%, so actually, I can give you 27 of the components were marked as unsatisfactory. And again, if a teacher's marked as unsatisfactory on any one component, that's, that's really job jeopardy, and they're put on a plan of improvement.
Thank you.
Just, I just follow up on, did you say 26?
27.
20, the actual number, 27 out of 3,000, more than 3,000?
There were 27 components out of, gosh, over 40,000 components that were marked yet. Does that, when that takes the 22 components times all the, the folks that are on, that are doing the, the formal evaluations, yes?
Do you have how many people?
Yes, we do. In fact, that comes in the next chart.
Thanks. Okay. This next table shows the percentage and the total number of evaluations that were proficient, basic, and unsatisfactory for both non-tenured and tenured staff from 2017 to 2018, so the last two years. So if you're looking at the table, the first column that you'll see to the, on the far left is the evaluation type. So we're looking at initial, or which is non-tenured teachers, and tenured teachers right below that. The second column over is the valuation rating. So when you're looking at PB and U, that stands for proficient, basic, or unsatisfactory. And then the next few columns over, we're looking at the percent and number for 2017 compared to the percent and number for 2018. So if you notice the number of tenured teachers who are ranked proficient, and that's going to be the bottom row, and the proficient in that area goes from, it's basically less than half from 2017 to 2018. So you go from 2,707 teachers proficient for those tenured teachers down to 1,187. One of our theories about why this happened is that we implemented that non-evaluation year, and so that might be accounted for in some of those numbers. If you also look at the number of basic and unsatisfactory for, for both areas, they increased slightly for both evaluation types from year to year. So we're seeing more staff that are getting basic and unsatisfactory ratings compared to what we have in the past. Some possible reasons for this, it's slight, but some possible reasons are that our elementary and secondary principal directors that supervise our principals have really been working on, with principals on evaluation, and how you have those feedback conversations around performance. And then the other hypothesis is that, basically, with that non-evaluation year, you're giving back time for people to spend that time to have a conversation and to start working on teaching practices. Before we did that, we, we did talk to principals about how much time does a typical evaluation take? And they were telling us anywhere between 10 and 15 hours per teacher, times if you have 25 teachers. So the amount of time it takes to really dig in and have those conversations and give feedback.
That was for the teachers who were basically proficient.
Proficient, yeah.
They were, beyond that, it was, it went up considerably.
So it doesn't even count for people who are really on plans that need more support and more conversations.
Does that, does that include the observation time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, includes the observations, the conferences, any additional informal observations and stuff that you want to do. So this is some of the data we're seeing. Do you have any questions about these data?
Well, I, I have a question. The disparity between, I mean, when you look at initial teachers versus proficient, I'm assuming, I mean, intuitively, I would have expected for initial teachers to have much lower ratings, but I guess they're looking at it in the context of where they are professionally, that they're new, and they're kind of comparing them to other new teachers and not to an experienced teacher. Okay. So it's kind of saying you're, you're where you kind of should be as a first or second or third-year teacher.
The percent is just slightly higher, but the, but the, there's also less. We have, we have fewer teachers that are in non-tenured than tenured, as far as you're looking at total numbers as well.
But I do think you are seeing an increase in, in teachers that are rated in the basic area, so there, that might also be related to some of those conversations we're having with principals.
And in 2017, everybody was still being evaluated. The off-years weren't.
That's correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay, thanks.
So in large organizations and the US military, there's a lot of theories about efficiency and the efficacy of evaluations that revolve around not having individuals in one job or in one location for long extended periods of time. In the US military, I think it's a three-year rotation. No matter how good you're doing in a particular job or location, they move you. And, and part of that theory of management is that the evaluations tend to get distorted after that amount of time, because people become part of the culture in that particular location, and nobody wants to evaluate them accurately if there's any issue involved, because they like each other, they're friends. And so the evaluation process loses its efficacy after a amount of time. Now, I can see where there's a huge advantage in our neighborhood schools of our, of our instructors being there and getting a sense of the community and, and having that knowledge and, well, I taught your, your, your big brother and, and all that, and that's, that's wonderful. But I'm wondering, what kinds of things are we doing as an organization to ensure that the efficacy of our evaluation process is not distorted by the longevity of our employees at single locations?
I think that has come about with the, with the, within the last years where we've had added some directors, particularly at the elementary where there was just two for 60 some, for 60 schools. sixty schools. They're really getting to know, they're working really much more so than when I first came over here. There are, our directors are real instructional leaders and helping those principals be instructional leaders. They're having, they're having in-depth conversations with them about what they're seeing, about how their folks are doing, going through this data with them, discussing it with them. So it's not just a given, you just assume where nobody ever had time to go and look. People are looking and taking a look at this. I believe that that is happening, but you're right. It is, it is difficult. If you have a teacher that's been there a long time, everybody always says they're great and you come in as a new administrator and you've got some real concerns, that can culturally be a tough thing. But we've got some folks that are, that are looking at that. I think you can see even right here that the, like the number of plan of improvements or plan of growth, there's not a big difference between the initial and those that are tenured. So people are finding that they are backed and mostly because I think we've come more and more, we're looking at the data and it's not just about, I like you, I don't like you, I think you're good, I think you're not good. This is really about the evidence. The nice part about the Danielson, you've got twenty-two components, it's really about the evidence you take and let's talk about what's happening there. It takes sort of the personal out of it and becomes about that, that situation and what you've got there and I think that is making a difference.
And just some of the, I just want to clarify that when we, what we did was change positions here, so we eliminated.
Oh, yeah.
A director of assessment, assistant soup, and then like took away three positions from departments and put them into supervision so that there could be a closer look. So we rearranged here.
To put the focus on.
But there is, there's a change. We don't, we know that we need to be where we want to be and evaluation is always a difficult part of the whole system because it does take time and energy. But the very first year, so you had, there were twenty-seven things that were unsatisfactory out of the fourteen and the twenty-two components. So there's, you know, about forty thousand chances and now we have twenty-seven. The very first year when we looked at the data, there was one. So we've increased it by twenty-six. We're moving in a different direction. But I just wanted to share that this is a process of learning and understanding the responsibility of being a supervisor, an administrator, and a fair, trained enough to understand quality and what's happening and expectations, as well as supporting staff, whether you're at the leadership level, in a school level, at a, you know, a support level, that we have to understand what is our job, have we been given, you know, the outcomes and the duties, if you will, and that we, you know, describe what is performance and what is good performance. So this isn't something that you come in and you hash. It's really a growth understanding of what are the jobs, do we understand the jobs, do we have the supports? And then is the, are the competencies there? And we're beginning to talk about those competencies now that other things are in alignment.
Okay. One more slide. Just big idea takeaways. I want to just build on what Mike and Dr. Bishop just said. We're using evidence now for evaluation. I remember back when I was being evaluated, there were years that I may not have even been evaluated, to tell you the truth. And a lot of it was opinion and who you know and all those kind of things. So this is based on evidence. People are in classrooms doing observations based on a common framework, so they're looking for similar things as opposed to what Mike would want to look for and what I would want to look for. They're looking at products like lesson plans and, you know, if you observed a lesson, how did that go? Talking to students, what did you learn in this, you know, during this lesson? Getting parent input, peer input, and like, you know, looking at student data too. It's not a formal piece of the evaluation process as far as rating, but they're looking at that as part of it. So the evidence piece is a huge shift in how we do teacher evaluation over those last five years to prior to that. The other thing is that it provides that common language. We can all talk about the same thing and it gives teachers, especially new teachers, that roadmap of what we would be looking for in this complex thing called teaching, you know? And they know that they're not going to be able to work on every piece of it, but then it helps us write goals and help strengthen some of those areas to help them be better teachers. And then thirdly is it fosters dialogue. We're having richer conversations around instruction than I think we did before and I think having this framework has helped with that. Now, the big question is, does teacher evaluation impact student outcomes? Based on research from the Gates Foundation where they did a six-year study on this and really looked at intensive partnerships for effective teaching, they looked at teacher evaluation, student growth is part of that and all that. And after their six-year evaluation, they really found that it didn't have a significant impact on student outcomes, graduation rates, teacher behavior and all that. And some of the possible reasons they put out forth around that is because it's more complex than just one thing. So in addition to achievement data, there's also social emotional competencies that kids and adults have that we need to look at. There's factors like early childhood education that can have an impact on student learning. Family, state and policy decisions sometimes impact that. So while there are good parts of the process, especially collecting evidence and having those conversations, some of the research that's come out has really found that it isn't having that impact.
Can you email me a copy of that?
I sure can.
Because it's all in the numbers there. I mean, I'd really like to drill down into that and see what the basis for that conclusion was and what it was, what kinds of districts they looked at and what kind of circumstances.
Yeah. It's by the Rand Corporation. I'll send that to you.
And, and just in closing, before we pull up the other, we're also, this isn't just a staff evaluation on folks in AEA, it's also looked at at all levels. And so there have been and has been, continues to be work in the evaluation process for type B folks, principals, assistant principals, directors. And you would probably have noticed some changes as well in that category. We're shoring up our ability to be leaders and then to then move through the evaluation process of understanding good instruction and classroom management and things like that.
I'm just wondering if that's the results of a reliable study or report. How do you juxtapose that? We know that a good teacher makes all the difference in the world.
It does.
So why wouldn't evaluation of good teachers versus teachers that aren't as talented as those teachers, why wouldn't that also be a strong indicator of the success of those classrooms?
It's, it's very interesting to read the work that they did on this because you also need to remember the context of this time when they did this study. So they had specific districts that they were looking at and they were putting very specific frameworks, observation tools, student data and incorporating that into different models. However, at the same time, across the country, districts, including us, were also starting to take these pieces from what they were doing and we were doing them ourselves. So you want to think about where they, comparing them to a true control group that wasn't doing this, that can compound the results that they might get from the study. If there were changes in state policy or district policy that changed how people were doing it, you might not have a true comparison with other districts. There could be various reasons for why you're not seeing those differences. But to your point, the most important thing is a classroom teacher. I mean, the research has shown, three years of a teacher that isn't strong and doesn't get high results has long-lasting effects, but the same is true for three years with a strong teacher has even more effects on student achievement and where they go. So we know it's an important thing. It's what are those variables and how do we measure that? But we're still, I think, trying to figure out how you capture that.
There's a real disconnect there, in at least the logic that appears to me, between something that says there's no connection between evaluation and success in the classroom.
Well, the evaluation process is one part of the, is part of it. The professional development we put in, you are absolutely right and you aren't going to find anybody in this room that's not going to argue what she just said and what you've said, that a strong teacher makes all the difference. So we do put a lot of time and effort, administrators put a lot of time and effort into the evaluation process in that belief that they want to make sure that they're doing all they can. And the Danielson framework was nice, it's about the teachers, when this was introduced a year before we ever started evaluating, they were really looking at it. They liked it because it really helped them categorize the skills they needed, what was going on there. So I think it has been positive. I think people do put work because they do want to increase the effectiveness of their teachers. We just haven't been able to draw that the evaluation process itself ensures that.
Danielson, I mean, Danielson herself has said that her design was to improve instruction, never to be used as an evaluation tool.
Correct.
We're not in the system like the military, not at all. And we have collective bargaining agreements, we have statutory requirements, we're out operating in a very different model and the biggest effect for people is a Danielson model for professional development to develop people in business. We get that. The most valuable people, your employees should be developed to then get, you know, the returns that you're looking for or whatever. But what she herself has been angry, saying that a system to try to get to what's quality, what's not quality, enforce that quality, she had never agreed to. In fact, she speaks against it in large-scale teaching venues and research venues, that her work really is not used for what it was designed. It was designed to build a competency of people, but now it's used to evaluate them. And those two, you're correct, there is not much of a link in our business.
And I'd just like to share too that it's very complex and so this is a national issue. I think everybody here recognizes that this is a trend in the profession of trying to become more accurate in terms of our evaluation. But the reason there have been far more administrators removed on a percentage basis in teachers is that in order to do what you're thinking of, to do it well, requires every principal to be adept at distinguishing good instruction, knowing it on their own, being an instructional leader, having the courage and backing of administration and boards to be able to make hard decisions from popular folks who may be really good and nice to kids but don't teach them what they need to know. Those are, there's a whole cultural component. If I'm a teacher and I've been told for twenty-five years that I'm exemplary and great and a new instructional leader shows up tomorrow and says, meh, basic, you know, I've got a whole mind warp thing to work through. So it's a system, it's a way of training. Basically, professional development has been across the country the most influential thing at changing behaviors, not really the evaluation. So we have to do both and we have to do them thoughtfully and you can't just go in as a district and just simply change all the rules on somebody overnight. You have to work through what is good teaching look like? If I'm a principal, can I really recognize it? Teachers are the first to recognize if a principal rates me and doesn't know what they're rating. And so we have to do it. That's why it's kind of a process, not something we can just do. But it's a great discussion and it needs to be done, there's no question. We have to give teachers more accurate information about their performance and we have to provide administrators more accurate information about their performance in order to do that. So it takes it all. Yeah. I just, I'd just say that's why I carefully framed my question acknowledging that education delivery is different than a major corporation or the military and the advantages of having longevity in local schools. And I based my question on, given that, that we want to maintain that, how do we ensure the effacy of our evaluation process, given that it creates other problems with the evaluation process? So that was my question, not to say, oh, we need to do the military model or the corporate model.
I didn't take that, it's just very different.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is very different.
The leadership models.
Yeah, and I do think that the Danielson is, as soon as I, you know, the more familiar I become with it, the more I see it's almost, it's a teaching tool, it's a learning tool to improve professional capability. And it almost begs the question of, should it be used as a teaching, as a professional improvement tool rather than an evaluation tool?
And Dr. Knutson had mentioned that prior to implementing it, all of our administrators have gone through a training, a thirty-hour training, and that's true of all our new administrators as they are coming in as well, to try and, to try and make sure everybody does, is on that same, that same scale and looks at things the same way for that reason.
Okay, Mr. Holloman had something to mention and then I think we need to move on to our next topic.
All right, okay. I was just gonna say also that the teaching's a little bit different in that if you had no evaluation system at all, I'm gonna say at least half of the people practicing it would still be working each year to improve themselves as opposed to any number of private sectors where if you just said, we're not gonna, we're not gonna look at what you do. I think a lot of people go out and get in their cars and go home because you could. So to some degree, any system gets in the way of what a lot of teachers are trying to do and hopefully it enhances what they're trying to do. But I think part of the problem you have in trying to have a good evaluation system in a, in education that shows statistical results is that a fair number of people are trying real hard to make that happen anyway, even in the absence of a system. So putting a system in place gives you some data, but it doesn't necessarily get the change it would be if you were coming in to say, an unregulated place and saying, we're gonna have some rules now.
Okay, Mr. Donley, I'm gonna give you thirty seconds.
Yeah, I completely recognize that. On the flip side of that is one bad teacher can ruin somebody for life. My junior year at Diamond, I'd been in the advanced science and math group all through mirrors. I got to Diamond, I had the same teacher for trigonometry and for physics. I never took another science class after that in my life. Ruined it for me. He never was in the classroom. He would go in a closet and he never came out. Left us out there to figure things out on our own. And it just takes one teacher like that to ruin hundreds of kids' future.
Okay, well, thank you. And we're probably grateful that you became a lawyer.
Next, Madam Chair, we have some information on the six through eight English Language Arts. This was initially shared just during the superintendent report because it was on non-action. So we'd like to offer more time, just a very brief overview because I know that the board wants questions. Thanks.
Okay, so thank you. Dr. Bellamy is coming up here with me because she's been the lead on this project, but just wanted to remind you of the background of why we're here and then I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Bellamy. We, probably it was about fifteen, eleven to fifteen years ago is our last adopted curriculum in ELA for six through eight. So two thousand four for our elementary sixth grade in Hoot Mifflin and two thousand eight for our middle school ELA curriculum. And as you, you know, think about those dates, those were prior to the Common Core and the Alaska Standards. So materials and stuff that we have aren't aligned and, and that was kind of the impetus for looking at what do we need, high-quality curriculum to support our teachers and helping kids achieve those standards. So in two thousand fifteen, the school board at that time approved a K-eight English Language Arts review. We started with the K-through-two, our K-through-five review, accepted that and did a two-year rollout, K-through-two first, and then this year, three-through-five. And then this year, we're doing the six-through-eight review. And that's where we're at today. And where I'm gonna turn over to Dr. Bellamy to talk to you about what that process was and then what our recommendation is and then you can ask questions.
Thank you, Dr. Knutson. I guess I need to push the button. There we go. Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Knutson. So as I sit here as one person, as the administrative lead on the project, I do want to acknowledge that the six-eight ELA review to date has included every, almost every department on the academic services side of the House in the Anchorage School District, our federal programs, multiple teachers, both elementary and middle school facing administrators to really come to this recommendation. And so I wanted to acknowledge that while we are here, we are here on behalf of many. So to look at the process that was undertaken to review materials, we, we're able to identify, and again, this process started a little bit in the spring, summer of last year. There were three curricula identified for us to field test or mini-pilot is what you might see on the screen. And those three curricula were my perspectives by Pearson, springboard by the college board, and pathways to college and career by PCG Education. We engaged twelve teachers, which had the reach of about six hundred students within the Anchorage School District in both elementary sixth-grade classrooms and sixth through eighth grade middle school classrooms. And those mini-pilots were for those three different curricula. We learned a lot from the K-five implementation and one of the asks that came forward from practitioners was that they had an opportunity to hear from colleagues that had actually touched the materials and used them with students to be able to help inform their decisions about the recommendation that ultimately came to you. As, as I said, we had to form a committee to actually look at all of that data and there were about thirty-six members on the review committee. Those members included AEA-represented members, teachers, principals. Those members included AEA-represented members, teachers, principals. We had special education, Title VI, AEL, and other departments to include migrant education, et cetera, on those teams as well. That Curricular Review Committee ultimately had the determination to select one of the three to bring to the superintendent and ultimately to you. Now, the Steering Committee was an added feature that we were able to include this year. And the purpose of that Steering Committee was an advisory committee. They were really looking at the entire process to ensure that we were not missing any pieces to the engagement, to the, you know, process as far as, you know, are we including all of the right people? Are we asking the, you know, deep questions? Are we, you know, are we sure that this, we've considered all of the different factors that go into a curricular review? And that Steering Committee, AEA, was able to select and place folk that they felt would serve well, as so was APA, the Principals Association. And then there were department representation, again, from Teaching and Learning, Special Education, AEL, AEL, and Title VI. So really wanting to just point out the diversity of voice, the diversity of representation of student groups relative to the adults who serve them on these various committees was very important to us. And then additionally, we had opportunities for community investment, and that was opportunities for any teacher regardless of their placement within our system, the courses that they taught, whether it was high school, middle school, elementary, to be able to come and to give some feedback and see the materials that were being considered and ask questions. And so those opportunities existed as well.
So the 36-member Curriculum Review Committee, were those 12 teachers on it or was their input just funneled to that group?
So relative to that committee, there was an application process that went out for everyone who was interested to serve, to be able to serve. And actually, there were about 38 people that applied and they were actually all chosen. We ended with 36. Some people, a couple people had to drop because of like familial commitments, but...
So the 12 teachers who were in the mini-pilot, were any of them on that team at all?
You know, I believe that there were, but let me ask, I'm gonna bring Larissa, our ELA coordinator, to the microphone. She worked very closely with that group. I do believe that there were a couple that had both Steering Committee, Curricular Committee involvement as well as pilot.
There were a bunch that were crossover. There was a little bit of representation, I think, from, from all grade levels as well.
How long was the pilot?
Pilot lasted from September 17th to October 31st.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, as we continue to move forward, we ultimately had a recommendation that we needed to reach and which came to you in the form of Spring Board. And so that is the consideration that we're asking for at this time.
Next slide, please.
And so just to give you an idea, that of course, you know, that is one piece of a very big process, right, of selecting that what curriculum our 6th through 8th grade students in Anchorage School District will be exposed to and teachers will be teaching. One of the things that we'll be working very diligently towards and in partner, we'll continue the partnership with AEA, realizing the negotiated Section 450 of the contract to ensure that the voices and participation are present in our process. We'll also be working very closely on a multi-year implementation plan. And one of the things that I personally have been extremely excited about is the learning we've been doing as a system around implementation science and what that means, not just for the, you know, I call the brass tacks of the curriculum, the things that you see and you touch, but also how we do that well with people and with teachers as, as one of the most important pieces in this puzzle. So we will continue that work in that multi-year plan. We are excited to have a pilot that we will be, you know, if we were, are able to get the approval that we need, we will have a pilot so that we can actually learn from teachers and students practicing this next year. There have been elementary classrooms and principals selected, as well as middle school principals and teachers selected. And principals are a big part of that as well. And so I say principals and teachers not lightly, because we need their support to learn, to help influence what the larger rollout would be. And then we would, with that learning taking place, scheduled to take place next year, and the fluidity of how that learning will take place and transpire, learning, fine-tuning, trying some things, fine-tuning again, we're looking at a district-wide implementation in August of 2020.
And with that, the goal is that people will have had professional development and professional learning opportunities, they will have the materials in their hands, they will, they will know all that before they leave for the summer prior to implementation so that they feel confident in that beginning of the year. Now it's open to questions.
Yeah.
So I don't know if the other board members have gotten those communications regarding pushback against Spring Board from folks outside of our district that have had experience with it and weren't happy with it. What was the, the actual vote to, you know, how many members of the committee supported going with Spring Board? And then I was wondering if you had reached out to any of the districts around the country that have adopted Spring Board and what was your, if you did that and you did some sort of survey, what were the results of those surveys?
So as far as the actual vote is concerned, we can get that information to you. We have it collected. I just don't have it right here in front of me, but we do have that information for you. But when you, when it, your other part of your question around pushback, I will say for the Teaching and Learning Department, we necessarily not have received pushback, but we've actually received calls from other districts that are using Spring Board. We've actually reached out to other districts who have been using Spring Board. We took a team to actually learn and to see like, what are some lessons that you learned in this? We took a team of principals, teachers to Lafayette, Louisiana, Lafayette Parish School System, about 30,000 students, similar demographics to ours, even though they are in southeast Louisiana. And we learned that they actually loved Spring Board and they would continue to use it. However, they're having some changes at the state level that is mandating that they use one of two curriculum, that the state is mandating, but otherwise, they actually would have continued. And then we did some reference checks to some other districts up north, northeast, that have been using it and actually doing a 612 implementation. And they have all been extremely supportive of Spring Board and the opportunities that it provides in rigor and support for students, but also teachers as well.
So what was the extent, how many school districts did you survey that currently use Spring Board?
There were three.
So...
Lafayette Parish School System was one of them. And we, it was, I think Clark County, we spoke to Clark County. And then we spoke to...
Chicago or...
No, in Las Vegas.
Miami?
Las Vegas.
Las Vegas, okay.
And then we spoke to, gosh, it's on the tip of my tongue, but it is a smaller school district in, is it York County who we spoke to? I believe it was York County.
Do you have a sense of how many school districts out there are using Spring Board?
No, I don't.
We would need to get that information.
We would get that information for you.
Okay. And you really don't have a number for me? I mean, was there, was there unanimous consent for adopting the Spring Board from the committee?
So no, it was not unanimous. There were two that rose to the top of the three, and those two were My Perspectives and Spring Board. What, the process that we used to identify what the top choice, you know, what the top choice was B was, we actually gave each of the members five dots. And we said, think of these as $5 and how would you spend your, your money? They were given some non-negotiable criterias that was taken from the IMET, which is the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool, which was published by Achieve the Org, excuse me, Achieve the Core.org. And then there were four different criteria in addition to listening and speaking that the committee members spent a very long time talking about comparing notes and things of that nature. At the end of the day, they were very, they were kind of tied, actually. And then more digging into data, so we had a ton of data that was collected that day around different focus group, panel discussions, feedback opportunities to say, okay, so we have a tie here and we're, you know, based on all of the totality of the evidence, do you agree with Spring Board? And people said yes. And so that was ultimately...
When you say people said yes...
The voting committee. The committee of, excuse me, the review committee, the committee of 36 people.
So when you say they said yes, was it a majority? Was it, was it two-thirds? Was it...
At that point, yes, it was a majority. After the tie, they...
One more than 18?
Say again?
If there's 36 people, there'd be one more than 18.
Yeah, I would say a majority, yes.
So how big a majority?
One more than 18, I guess. I hope.
And if I can, if I can add to that, as we were looking through this, it really was split between the two. The people who did the piloting, Spring Board kind of came up a little bit higher. The people who dug into the review, who didn't actually do the field testing, Pearson came up a little bit higher when they did their final vote. It was pretty much split between two programs. And so when we had the discussion afterwards, it's like, okay, so what is it? Can we live with each one of these? They both bring rigor that we didn't have in our current curriculum. And so we were at a place where we, actually in a pretty good place, that we had two really good choices that could both work for our district. When we started looking at, what do we want in high school? So if this is preparing kids for going into high school, does one rise above the other? And that's where we started seeing some differences, because with Spring Board, we have those pre-AP strategies that we can start working on with kids to help prepare them as they move on. And it provides a nice bridge actually with those from the K-through-5 to the 6th through 8th, and then from the 6th through 8th to the high school. So that's kind of what put it above the other one.
So Dave, what kind of issues are you hearing? Is there something specific that you can, I mean, what are the...
Yeah, I got emails saying Spring Board wasn't a good choice.
Because...
Well, it's hard to identify fully. I mean, who knows if they're, the efficacy of the emails? I mean, they could be from a competitor, you know, for all you know, they could have assaulted them and say, you know, we want that business, so let's badmouth our competitor. So, you know, I'm not taking it for face value. That's, but I do think due diligence requires close examination of the issues involved, especially if it was this close a vote by the recommending committee, which I'd really like to know what the actual number was of the vote.
Yes, I have it now.
I think the board should have that number. Because we went through adoption of our current K-through-6 and I've learned since then. And I'm gonna ask a lot more questions this time than I did back then, because we had a multi-year process with dozens and dozens of the public and educators involved, and the board took the advice of the committee and all heck broke loose. So this time, I want to be very prepared, if I'm voting for a new curriculum, to be on very, very solid ground.
And has it been the Pearson program that you've heard people say is superior to Spring Board?
Yes, yes. I've heard that, but it doesn't mean it's true.
And you're hearing it from people in...
It means that I want to ask more questions, yeah.
Like in pedagogical...
Yeah, yeah. So I guess, I guess a point that you made is really important to me. It was the next question I was gonna ask. Did any of the three districts that you consulted with on Spring Board, did any of them utilize our current K-through-6 English Language Arts curriculum?
So not, no, not that we were able to, no.
You can see why I would ask that question.
I understand.
And I would like to reach out to a district that's using our current K-through-6 and see if Spring Board's been a successful follow-up on that. Too, as a board member, I would like to know that, if it's been successful as a follow-up on our existing English line, English Arts curriculum that we're utilizing here.
I think Dr. Bishop wanted to add something.
Oh, I was just gonna share with the Chair, as well as the members, if you've ever had a large organization and done large-scale change, you will find folks on both sides. If it wasn't my choice, it's probably not the right choice, kind of thinking. So the best that we can do is involve the people making the decisions and not just from what I like and is that it's really broader than just the folks in this office and broader than just classroom teachers. It was, you know, IT, it was specialized teachers, to come together. But I am sure in almost every committee that we've ever put together, that there are people that feel as though, you know, the process was great, I went through it, but I'm still not happy because of the outcome. Because they have a strong feeling towards one or alike. But we're just presenting our best thinking as we go through this. But I just wanted to share that before we got to the last comment in regard to the alignment piece, which is highly important.
And we have, thank you for that, for that question. We can find that information out for you. But I think one of the things that I'd like to ask Diane Orr to come up, because she has been instrumental in working with Larissa and a team to actually look at that Cengage K-5. And what does that mean in yield and getting us, like if, if Spring Board is adopted, what is that going to mean for our 6th grade classrooms, both at the elementary and at the middle school? And so she has been working with the team and kind of leading that piece of the work.
So as we know with the Cengage material, the rigor has upped the ante. And knowing that 6th grade really currently should be doing HM, which is extremely old, 2004, we do know there has to be a plan to bridge between 5th grade Cengage, who just had a good rigorous Common Core State Standard program, and get them through the year to full implementation.
M is Houghton-Mifflin, right? A former, sorry, a former...
Yes. But 6th grade is still using that, because Cengage is K-5. So that's okay. It's understandable. And so we are making a plan to help bridge between that rigor of those 5th graders just having Cengage, but yet not quite fully into, unless it gets adopted and we roll it out, Spring Board, then really their 7th grade year. So we are in the process of building that plan to help bridge that gap, to include that rigor, to help bridge the Common Core State Standards and make sure that 6th grade has a robust curriculum next year also.
I also would like to add, when we talked to some of the other districts, actually both Pearson and Spring Board, both of them said regardless of the materials, it's about the change in pedagogy and the work that's gonna have to happen, 'cause they both had very rigorous materials and stuff. And so regardless of what curriculum materials, it's typically not the materials themselves, it's about the change in teaching practices. And that's what we've, you know, run into for K-through-5. It's the change in teaching practices, not necessarily the curriculum. The really nice thing about 6th through 8th curriculum out there is there aren't as many to choose from as you see for the K-through-5. And what's out there is, there's a lot of high-quality curriculum out there. So we, you know, we can choose a bunch of different things that would probably work. It's what we're gonna invest into that professional learning and making sure we're getting people to where they need to be and understanding and feeling confident in that. And as well as, does it help prepare for those high school classes that we're wanting to do? And if we're really wanting to build those pre-AP strategies and get that in, that's what put that one a little bit higher than, than Pearson.
And I'd like to add, I hear what you're saying, Dave. And I, what I appreciate about, what I've read about this program is that we are going to have that year of piloting. We are going to, you know, we've had some people in, I understand, to talk about implementation process and the science of that. And so I think there's gonna be a better process this time around than there was with, with our first year of the Cengage.
Yeah, I'm really encouraged about that, but that leads to another question I had. Let's say we go into this pilot program and things don't work out. Are we committed to a purchase of this curriculum? Or can we pull back if we don't like it after the pilot program?
I mean, that's the whole purpose. I mean, we, that's the nice thing about having a pilot year and taking this year for us to learn, because you go into it with what you see from the vendor and what you've talked to people, but you haven't really done it. So we are gonna learn a lot through this pilot. If we get information back that helps, that makes us think, we need to rethink this, then we need to come back and rethink this. So we're, we're moving forward in that respect, and that's why we have this year to figure it out.
Well, I agree with that. I was asking more of like a contractual question.
Contractual, yeah.
Certainly, we, the, the purchase of the pilot is going to be much smaller than the later-on purchase. But again, stressing that for K-5, it really isn't the materials, it's the teaching practices that have the biggest concern of employees. So the actual textbook wasn't of concern, we've gone through it. It's actually the change in practices again. So we're really looking at the bigger picture of an implementation, which is what we've learned from the con... learned from the consultant.
So, Dr. Bishop, are you saying that once we contract with Spring Board to go into the pilot year...
We would have purchased those items.
Were contractually obligated to continue on?
Just for those items through the pilot.
We would work with procurement to do a year-by-year contract so that we could figure that out.
So, it'd be fairly limited, the first year?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I would like to mention that Board President Starmer Set just joined us. Would you like me to turn the mic over to you?
I would like to add something in closing, just for historical context. For the, those, there's some administrators in the room who've been through several major adoptions. When we did Houghton Mifflin back, way back in the day, the same kind of consternation came, there was lots of issues. When we went to Go Math, the veterans who remember the elementary Go Math adoption, some similar things. But I, I think I could argue, though, as far as like this notion of implementation science, I think the fact that people are paying attention, that they're questioning, they're, we don't, that's great. It's a sign that people are understanding, just like what happened with K-5, that we can't purchase $6 million worth of stuff and then say, "If you like what's in your file cabinet from 20 years ago, keep doing it." Because the real issue is about, our mobility rates are so high, our, the kids are impacted when they get haphazard curriculum and scope and sequence. And so whatever we can do to try to help that, we should. And the training that we're getting with the agreement between AEA and the district with regards to Michael Murphy's work on how do we implement things with some degree of integrity and try to get people to really use those materials so we can tell if they work. It's hard to know sometimes if the program doesn't work or if we don't work the program. And so you have to be able to give a good faith effort, and I think that's what people are starting to realize, it's really critical. So, people are weighing in, which is good.
And I think one of the biggest things that I'm excited about is both for the K through five and for sixth through eight, if we proceed forward, is we're really looking at this idea of program evaluation. So, to your point about what are the metrics? What are we looking at to see if this is effective? We're starting to have that conversation with Dr. Murphy. When you're doing a large-scale implementation, what are those right metrics at different points in the implementation? Because obviously, in year one, you're not going to necessarily see student outcomes, because teachers are still learning it. But what can we look at that we can report back to you to show, "We're doing this, we're getting input"? Usually, that's teacher satisfaction with it and teacher implementation, what does it look like in the classroom? So, we're working through that with our committees, that are kind of that multidisciplinary committee as a result of the contract. And then we're having Michael Murphy come in and helping guide us through that, so that we can do a better job of reporting out how we're doing, because that's also beneficial to us, because we can make those tweaks as we go, because if something's not working, we don't want to just keep doing it if it's not working. We have to adjust, it's that continuous improvement. And if we don't collect the right information to inform that, we might be missing it. And so that's a big shift, I think, in what we're doing moving forward, is that program evaluation piece.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just really wish we would have had an example of a district that was using our current elementary reading curriculum, utilizing the Spring Board as a follow-up to it successfully. I mean, that would mean a lot to me as a policymaker here.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation, and I think we are moving on to our, hi, thank
All right. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to this portion of the school board meeting. It is the portion that we call Focus on Staff and Students. And this was an effort made by our school board about three years ago now to share the good news and focus on the people who make ASD great. And so let me start by saying, the South Anchorage High School soccer team were the champions for 2018. So, the ladies, South Anchorage Soccer Team, please come forward, Wolverines. Here they come. Come on forward over here, ladies. I have a few things to say about your team. How are you doing this year? Good? Got the practicing in? Are you still in the dome? All right. So, the South Wolverine girls are the 2018 state soccer champions, and they're looking to repeat that this spring. They ended the 2018 season with a 15-win, four-loss, five-tie record, scoring 60 goals and allowing 13. Is your keeper still the same this year? So, where's your keeper? All right, nice. Oh, so here it says, this was a very young team with nine sophomores and nine freshmen, so they hopefully are all back. 2018 was South's fifth state championship in the last eight years. The team conceded zero goals during the entire state tournament and ended Diamond High School's 56 game, or 56-goal unbeaten streak. Game unbeaten, there you go. South had three all-state players for 2018. She was Senior Danny Seer and Senior Jordan Fouracre, and then junior, hopefully she's with us, Alex Nefka. Alex? All right. Alex is the keeper, there you go. The Wolverines also won the state GPA award with 3.69, for which their parents are most happy about, right, ladies? They're super, give a clap for that, yes. The highest GPA in the state for girls soccer. Senior Jordan Fouracre was named the Alaska Gatorade Player of the Year and also received several United Soccer Coaches Award. Coach Brian Farrell was named the 2018 Coach of the Year for Large Schools and Regional Coach of the Year, Mountain West Region Presented by the United Soccer Coaches. Congratulations on your state championship title, your hard work and dedication pay off, and good luck to you in future seasons. So, who's the captains this year? All right. You ladies, get the mics, tell us about your team. Tell us anything you'd like this audience to know about South High Soccer Lady Wolverines. Alex, how about we start with you?
So, our season has just begun, and we have our first game on Saturday, and we've been working really hard, like we did in the past year. And we hope to continue working hard and hope that we have a good season, and...
But hope is not a strategy, it's a strategy. Hard work and...
Dedication.
And obviously, you guys are close. How many of you have played before this year, when you were little to get old?
Like all of us.
What else? Ladies, would you like to share something?
Alex covered it.
Yeah? Okay. So, how about you just say your name and your grade, so we get to know you? And then we'll take a photo for our website, how's that?
I'm Molly, and I'm a sophomore this year.
I'm Emma, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jayla, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Lauren, and I'm a junior.
I'm Karen, I'm a senior.
I'm Alex, I'm a senior.
I'm Casey, I'm a junior.
I'm Gracie, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Amanda, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Holly, and I'm a junior.
I'm Sierra, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm also Sierra, and I'm a junior.
I'm Elena, and I'm a junior.
I'm Grace, and I'm a junior.
I'm Ainsley, and I'm a senior.
I'm Alexa, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Taya, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Dot, and I'm a freshman.
And I'm Brian, and I'm a senior.
All right. And well, ladies, let's go. I am a big, major soccer fan, and I played in high school myself, and I played back in the 80s when they called them foolbacks. Do you know what a fullback is? A defender, yes? Now they're, yeah, so, but I was a left fullback. That was my career when I was in high school. So, let's take an awesome picture right over there, so we can get you guys in and put you on our website. Ladies and gentlemen, South Anchorage High School makes ASD great. Also with us this evening, would the West High Girls Nordic Ski Team please come forward? You also make ASD great. This is the day for the ladies, come on forward. Woo, West High! All right. So, this is the West High School Girls Nordic Ski Team. This year was the West Girls' fifth straight state championship title, as well as winning their fifth straight Region Four championship. Woo! Yeah! Yay! In addition to winning the state title this year, West also won the academic awards for both state and region, with an average combined GPA from the fall semester of 4.37. Nice job! So, we've got a lot of IB or AP classes in there. At Junior National Championships this past week, held in Anchorage, the Eagles won the Roger Weston Award for the top high school girls ski team in the country, an award they have won for the third consecutive year. Congratulations on your fifth state championship title, you make ASD great! Good job! And we're going to pass the mic and talk about your team, and because it's smaller, you actually have a little bit more time to talk. So, you can tell us your grade and your name and the best thing about skiing, Nordic skiing, how's that? Or your sport, what about that? Or you can say the best thing about your school, whatever you'd like.
I'm Ivy, I'm a junior, and the best part about skiing is definitely this team, just like the friendships that we all have with each other and just, yeah, all the racing, too. It's pretty fun.
I'm Annie, I'm a senior. Ivy took what I was going to say, so I'll have to think of something else. I think my favorite thing about Nordic skiing is the places it's taken me.
I'm Quincy, I'm a sophomore, and of course, I love my team, but I also love the spaghetti feeds. It's very fun.
Hi, I'm Ellie, I'm a senior this year. I'd say, like Ivy, my favorite part about this team, whether it's West skiing, APU, or Junior Nationals, it's just always with my best friends, so...
I'm Aubrey, and I'm a senior. I think everybody kind of covered it. I really like snow, so, that's good.
So, coaches, you want to add something?
Hi, I'm Karina, I'm a coach, not a senior. And my favorite part of skiing as a coach is the kids.
I'm Anson, I'm also a coach, obviously. And my favorite part is watching all these ladies improve over the years and how much they've grown.
What was your best memory this year?
Probably, probably the end of the state relay up in Fairbanks. The end of the state relay, our state meet is three days, and it's the combined time for the three races. So, the end of the state relay was pretty special for me.
Was it close?
Uh, no, not. It wasn't, it wasn't close at all. No, it was, yeah, just all the people who were there, all these skiers, it was really special for me, so...
Well, certainly, ladies, it's always fun to celebrate you, as well as South tonight. I, like I said, it's a total ladies' night here in the district office, and we thank you. And thank you, not only for your academics and your sports, but really everything about you, making ASD great. And we'd love to take another picture with you. Okay? Of course. Yeah, actually, some cool grits, too. Congratulations, ladies. Most of you are moving on, but some of us can be here. Yeah? Thank you. Thanks again. Thank you. Awesome job. Thank you. Great job. And ladies, if you have any thoughts or thoughts on something, thank you.
We need a motion to move into executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for the purposes of litigation and negotiations.
Second.